Welcome all of you again and thank you all for being here for this forum. And it's a forum, it's not a debate, it's a forum. So we hope you have a good time with it, enjoy yourselves and be yourselves as you answer these questions. You have two minutes to, for an opening statement. So we'll start with you Sean, with an opening statement, two minutes.
Great, I'd like to be the first to get all the public's kick out.
You have a minute and a half left.
Alright, well, let's speed it up. I'd like to say thank you for your time in coming out this evening. I'd like to thank the teachers, the administration, and also the Gardner Area Chamber of Commerce for this event. Once again, my name is Sean O'Henderson, I'm running for the at-large position. I moved into Gardner, or this district, in 2000 with my wife. We have two kids, one goes to Gardner Edgewood High School and the other goes to Gardner Elementary School. I graduated from Kansas City Christian Academy in Prairie Village, Kansas. I have my accounting undergrad from DeVry University and also my MBA in emphasis finance from Keller Graduate School. I work currently for the USDA and dairy programs in the Economic Division. I am also a board member of the Zuma Credit Union. We just built a headquarters off of 135th and Metcalf. I am also an adjunct faculty teacher for Wright College and I also help out in my local church in the Finance Committee, I'm a trustee and a steward. I also have a nonprofit background, I help with a lot of schools. I say all that to let you know that my experience helps me with preparing budgets, reviewing financial statements, and also analyzing revenue and expenses. I'm running for my daughters and for the children of Gardner and Edgerton. I moved to this district for better schools and I believe this district is the very best. It has the best teachers and it has excellent administration and I want to sustain the infrastructure that we currently have and I want to see it grow. We have programs that I would like to see for the children to take care or do a lot more. I think the school district should do a lot more different programs, helping children different problems or circumstances. But I also would like to review policy and procedures to help better our schools and I, so much happening right now.
Thank you Sean.
For my children and teachers to be the focus.
Hit your cuss off, you got it real well. Thank you.
Hi everyone, my name is Kristin Schultz. I also want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I know that we all juggle busy schedules and getting out here takes some effort, so I really appreciate you coming. I, my roots in education run pretty deep. I was raised by two educators who were raised by educators and I have raised an educator. My family, my husband and I moved here 18 years ago with an eight-year-old daughter and a one-year-old son. That eight-year-old daughter is now a 26-year-old teacher at the high school. She teaches freshman and sophomore English and coaches basketball and soccer there. The one-year-old is now a freshman at Case State. And we also have a 14-year-old, just turned 14 last week, who goes to Pioneer Ridge Middle School. My educational background is in the legal field. I retired 14 years ago to start, stay at home and raise our children, but before that I was a certified paralegal in Kansas and Missouri both. My firm focused in corporate and civil litigation. We practiced contract law, real estate law. I did a little family law. I also served as a volunteer with, as a child advocate through CASA for 11 years. And that's what really brings me here today is my love of children and my desire to advocate for them and the timing was right in my own life to put my money where my mouth is and jump in with both feet. So, here I am.
Thank you Kristin.
Greg. I would also like to thank everybody for coming out today. I want to point out the irony that I told the teacher in this very school about 13 years ago I would never need public speaking skills. Here I am. Like I said, my name is Greg, I'm running for the position two for Gardner School Board. I grad, I entered the district in 1994 when my family moved to Edgerton. I actually graduated from DEHS in 2003. I have three amazing children in the school district currently. They've been to pretty much every school around. I've been actively involved in all of their schools, revealing with the principals, the teachers, volunteering my time, all that. The district, the students and the teachers are just very important to me. Gardner is very important to me. So I want to make sure that our kids have the future and have the beginning, the foundation that they deserve. Again, open to speaking. Basically, we all know the stuff that's happened over the past couple of years. I want to be, I want to make sure that with working with fellow board members that none of that ever happens again. That we all work as a team, we all work as a community, and we listen to everybody. I want to be your voice, I want to be the glue that kind of holds everything together to try to make sure that everything works like it's supposed to. I also want to make sure that you guys, as the taxpayers, have a, have a say in where your money's going, especially with the new bond that's come out, or the block bond that's come out that the state's put through. But I thank you guys for coming out.
Thank you Greg. Robin.
Good evening, my name is Robin Stretts and I am running for the at-large position for the school district. I've lived in Gardner for 19 years. I have four children. One has graduated from Gardner Edgewood High School in 2013. I have two that attend Wheat Ridge and then our youngest Reagan, she attends Gardner Elementary. I'm currently a best starter at First Student and Drives Special Needs with your bus. When people ask me why I wanted to run, the only thing that I could think of was just a simple phrase, and that is, "I'm running for your family and mine." And that's really why I'm doing this. I want to be a voice for all you guys or all the citizens. I want to be a voice for the teachers and I want everybody to feel like they can come to me and communicate with me and talk to me and I will not dismiss your concerns and I will try to help. I also want to be the stewardess of the money that we are entrusted with. I will consider that like my personal budget and needs will be met before once. I will also make sure that when hard decisions are being met, whether the budget or anything, that I will always put the children first. And finally, I would really like to be honored, if I'm elected, I'd be honored to serve on the current school board and with the superintendent. We have a great, they have a great momentum going and I would just, I would love to help work along with that team and continue that.
Thank you Robin. Mindy.
Good evening and thank you for coming. My name is Mindy Weimer and I'm running for school board position one. I was born and raised in Edgerton, Kansas and graduated in 1997. I'm a proud and dedicated stay-at-home mom of four children. My oldest goes to Pioneer Ridge Middle School, Reagan and Larry go to Edgerton Elementary, and my real-life carry is George, she stays at home with me all day, otherwise known as Brady. I decided to run for school board because I care about the education that my children and your children receive. I'm excited for this new opportunity in my life, but even more excited to be a strong voice for our children, teachers and parents. I want to help USD 231 grow and reach its highest potential. The district has, is fortunate to have exceptional educators that go above and beyond to ensure that our children are receiving the best education. I support our teachers and all the efforts that they put in to teach and our children. And that is why I would like to see the money go to, directly to the classroom so that they can have the tools and the materials that they need to better educate and enhance the education of our future leaders of America. Each year we see our classrooms growing larger and larger and so it would be nice to see a smaller classroom. Overall, we see a large budget and then as Harriet Strum would say, the buck stops here. So with that, I'm allowing you to hold me accountable with the budget that we have placed in front of us. I will work closely with my peers on the board to be, to spend the budget responsibly, effectively and efficiently and save where we can. I will do my part to be an excellent watchman of the taxpayers' money. When elected, I will work with my peers to find time for, convenient time for the school board meetings so that parents can come and patrons can come and teachers can come and be a participating member of the crowd. And if elected, I will not disappoint you. I'm goal-driven, passionate, ready to serve the community of Gardner and Edgerton. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Mindy. Karen.
Hi, I'm Karen Casey. I'm a graduate of DEHS, so are my husband, my kids, their grandmother. And I have a lot invested in this community and this district. I have always supported volunteering for the schools. I've even sewn and swore his addresses for Mr. Byrd. I've served as room mom, field trip, anything a teacher asks me of me, I will help them. No questions asked, I will help them. My background includes a work in production and customer service. I figure that gives me a pretty good boost on, when people call in, they're usually not calling in to a school board member because we're doing a great job, they're usually calling because they've got a problem. I know how to solve problems. I worked customer service many years for a major corporation, Jostens. And if you've got a question, I can find you an answer if I don't have the answer. I strive to build upon a very successful district. That's it.
Thank you Karen. Mary.
Good evening, my name is Mary Nelson and I'm running for reelection to the district. I'm currently serving as the vice president of the board. A little bit about me, I was born in Gardner, literally. Grew up here in Gardner, went to school here, graduated in 1982. My kids, both have graduated from here. This is my home, I'm very proud of Gardner, the community, Edgerton, very proud of it. I'm seeking reelection to continue what we've done for the teachers and the staff, the students of the school, and I thank everybody for coming to me.
Thank you Mary. Want to pass the mic back down to Sean, we're going to start with Sean. And you will have 60 seconds to answer this question, first question, and it's kind of a softball question. Some of you have already addressed it in your opening statement, but we're going to start with this one. The first question is, what motivates you to want to become a board member?
What motivates me is my daughters and their excitement when I told them that I was going to run and try my best to help and represent their school and the district. So that would probably be my first motivation and...
Thank you Sean. Kristin.
First and foremost is absolutely the students. That's what motivates me. I've had three kids go through this district, one's still going. And teachers also, I'd like to advocate for both the teachers and the students to give the best education possible. And I think we're well on the path to doing that. That was, that was my main motivation, was just the kids and advocating for them.
Thank you Kristin.
Greg. Yeah, my reason for going is my kids, your kids, I want to make sure that our kids get the best education possible. The other reason I really wanted to run is, we've started a great movement in our district and I want to make sure that that continues. I don't ever want to see our teachers in the same, same predicament that they were, not feeling like their voices were heard. Basically, it being run by just the top ed, it takes all of us, it takes the community to really give our kids the education that they need. So that's the reason I'm...
Thank you Greg. Robin.
Obviously, I'm running for my children and also for all of your children. I drive a special needs bus and those kids play a very special part in my heart too. I also want to be a voice for the teachers and get the communication going so the teachers feel like they can have somebody to come talk to and that I would listen to them and also with the parents.
Thank you Robin. Mindy.
I'm running a course for my children and their children as well. I'm, I love the teachers here, so I'm super involved with each one of my children's teachers, so supporting them and seeing my children achieve greatness, seeds of greatness as I put my children, as I save my children. And so, just really just seeing the success that the school board is currently making, I want to jump aboard and continue that path and see the excellence in education and where we can take our children and yeah, that's about it.
Thank you Mindy. Robin, or Karen, excuse me.
Yeah, I don't have kids in school anymore, that's why I have time to do this, but I am vested in this community. I've been here a really long time, been with teachers that my mom had, my kids had. I just want to see the community, the teachers, all the students get the best education that I know Gardner Edgerton can offer.
Thank you Karen. Mary.
Hi, and what motivates me is to continue the progress that we've made in the last couple of years for the students, teachers, the staff. It's, it's where I grew up, it's, I want to keep it going and be proud of, proud of our community that we created.
Alright, thank you Mary. The next question, we're going to be starting with Kristin. And Kristin, you will have 60 seconds, or everybody will have 60 seconds to answer this question. What are the three most important characteristics of a school board member?
I think the three most important characteristics would be integrity. That's just something that I, that I think is an important human characteristic. Integrity, flexibility, being able to be open-minded to other ideas is very important. I'm not the smartest person in the room at all times, so it's important to be able to listen to other ideas and, let's see, integrity, just transparency, being able to be a conduit between the community and, and the school district. Those would be my three characteristics.
Thank you Karen.
Greg. My three would be good communication skills, making sure that you can listen to what everybody is saying, that you can get those out to the rest of the board, get those to the district, get those to really whoever needs to get to. My next one would be open-mindedness, like Ms. Kristin said. Being open-minded to all ideas. Everybody on the board, the end goal is to make sure that the teachers and the students are taken care of. We just might have different ways of getting there. Doesn't mean it's wrong, we just got to work together. The third is honesty, making sure that we're honest to you and we're honest to ourselves.
Thank you Greg. Robin.
The three characteristics, two of which Greg took first. The first one is the team player. I think being on the school board, you need to be, listen to all sides and be willing to make those sacrifices and keep the children first. Communicator is very important. You need to be able to speak to the citizens, the teachers and also the parents. And then honesty, honesty, well that's pretty much what you need to, so people can trust you so they can come and speak to you.
Okay, thank you Robin. Mindy.
Communication for one thing is being open to hearing both sides, all parties, listening to parents, the teachers, the administrators. Integrity, just being honest, upfront, open, and then being accessible, being accessible for anybody that has questions or concerns, the needs, that they have needs, that they can come to speak to you and feel that they can, you know, talk to you, you know, as a real person, face to face.
Thank you Mindy. Karen.
First and foremost, the school board's purpose is to look out for the best interest, this interest of our students. It should be, should represent the community's view of what students should know and achieve. This includes meeting or exceeding state standards of education. The board should be accessible and transparent to all the community that we represent. It should be our role to ensure that our children get the best education possible, why being physically, financially responsible.
Thank you Karen. Mary.
I think what's important is being open to ideas and helping the district grow in a positive way. Being honest with the things that we do and we say within the school, as we'll model to our students, I think we need to do that. And the other one is caring for our students, teachers and staff and the community and letting them know that we are doing our best and their interest is at heart.
Thank you Mary. Alright, our next question, our third question, we'll start with. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I wasn't following my notes.
Thank you.
Alright, you still have 60 seconds.
I just wanted to say my three characteristics would first and foremost be listening, all of your characteristics, maybe repeating some, but I believe you have to be able to listen to people, understand and connect and try to work to answer the problems or your goals. And second, I believe you have to be honest, that integrity is vital for people to respect you and get behind you. And last, you have to be accountable for, to do what you say you're going to do and what you need to do. So accountable to the students, accountable to the parents, definitely, and accountable to the staff and everyone that's a part of the team.
Thank you Sean. My apologies. Alright, the next question, third question, we'll start with Greg. And you will have 90 seconds to answer this question. The question is, in your opinion, what have our schools done well in the past five years and what have they done poorly that you would improve? So a couple apart, what have they done well in the last five years and what have they done poorly?
This would of course be my turn first. I guess positive. Through it all, the, the teachers and staff have just stayed a community, they've stayed together. I think that's been phenomenal to watch, they, even though the administration was having issues, that our teachers rallied around and our students really didn't feel the cuts, they didn't feel the, the stuff that was happening above them. And I really want to say thank you to the teachers for that. I guess negative, without going into the whole past stuff, I, I don't want to focus on the past, the past is in the past. We all know what we can change, we all know what needs to be changed. We need to make sure that the money goes where it needs to go. It needs to get to the classrooms as much as possible. I just want to mainly focus on the positives. Building the students, teachers, building everything. I had something that I completely forgot, it's all passed around.
Alright. Thank you Greg. Robin.
One area that we have done well is education. My children have received an excellent education and really applaud all the teachers and the staff that has given that opportunity for my children. Another thing we've done well is kind of going off what Greg said, just making sure the students did not get involved with the last, the past that we've had. And the teachers just keep them positive and making sure that it did not affect the students. And something that we've done not so well, kind of like Greg, I just kind of want to focus on the positive. I'm going to focus on the future, we, like he said, we all know what went on, we all know, but I'm just here to be on the board to help the board bring that forward.
Okay, thank you Robin. Mindy.
I pretty much am with Greg and Robin in just moving forward, giving the best education we can to our children. I think through it all, the last five years, the district has stayed positive, the teachers have remained into the education, are really pushing forward to see to it that our children are happy in the classrooms, they're involved and, you know, I just think rehashing what's happened in the past, we just kind of need to move on with it and then just move forward and, you know, just keep educating our kids and making the teachers, you know, feel appreciated and, you know, making it easier for them and helping them out in their classrooms. And I just think that through it all, USD 231 has really done a good job of moving forward from the things that have happened in the past.
Thank you Mindy. Karen.
I think our state testing and our standards and our placement and where we ranked extremely high has a great reference for how well we're teaching our kids, how well we're keeping them educated. And I don't really know of anything that I would change.
Thank you Karen. Mary.
Everybody's been saying the same, but we have wonderful teachers, I think that's, that's a given, administration is wonderful. Our kids are getting great education, they're going on to colleges or their careers and they're doing wonderful things and I think that's very positive and great for our school district. You know, keep working on our positive attitudes and keep morale up and just going with it and it's a great place.
Thank you Mary. Back to you Sean. This guy.
Thank you. I was thinking about what we're doing well and first and foremost, as everyone has said, the teachers. And I'm overjoyed with my daughter, she's in third grade and she's already touching on geometry and al, algebra, different things like that. So an early start and a push forward, I spoke with Mark Renell who's seen, I'm looking to take, and he discussed his wife as a second grade teacher and just the level that is coming from that. So I am looking, that's what we're doing well and poorly. I would just like to work harder and better and make sure the teachers are well appreciated and that they're our focus because they're the lifeblood of our school. Thank you.
Thank you Sean. Kristin.
I think it might be even harder to go last year than it is to go first. I've had three kids in this district over a 20-year period of time almost and, so that's countless teachers that have been involved in my life and the lives of my children. And I can honestly say that there isn't a single year or a single child that I, that has had a teacher that I have not thought did an excellent job in educating my student. So I think we are above and beyond where our teachers are concerned. You know, there's always room for improvement. It's hard to, it's hard to say anything negative about the district that you're so passionate about and very passionate about our, our school district. I think we could prepare a little bit more for the growth that we're seeing coming. Teachers are becoming overwhelmed with the number of students that they have in their individual classes. And so that's something that, that we need to start preparing for. We are a growing community, people are coming and we want to maintain that top-level district that we've had up to this point so far.
Thank you Kristin. Alright, next question, the fourth question, we're going to be starting with Robin. And Robin, you will have 60 seconds to answer this question. Share with us your knowledge of Common Core and the role it should or should not play in our schools. You have 60 seconds Robin.
Common Core is a very, it's multi, different aspects of it to, to say, for me personally to say I like it all or I don't like it all. We're, we have it, it's a federal mandate, so in that regards, I will work with the school district and of course do what is, needs to be done to meet that, to meet those.
Thank you Robin. Mindy.
Common Core is a large debate throughout the states that have adopted it and here in the district we have adopted it. We've been mandated, so we're going to have to follow the curriculum. I don't necessarily personally care for it. You know, there are good things about it, there are some things I don't care about it, specifically the cost, what is it going to cost to continue this Common Core and, you know, what's the effectiveness that it's, you know, taking on our children and the classrooms and the teachers and so it's just a, it's a wide debate and so we'll see how it goes for in Kansas.
Thank you Mindy. Karen.
This is a tough one, Common Core. It is something that we're mandated to, we have to follow the rules, we have to do that. I don't really know enough about it. I don't really know enough about it to say whether I like it or I don't like it. I've kind of talked with my daughter, who is a substitute teacher, which has an educational background from K-State. She's kind of a little on the wish wash of how she thinks about it also. I think in anything that's put into effect, there are good things, there are bad things. I'm open to listening and trying to figure out what is the best part of it, what is not the best part of it, and figure out what we can do to get it changed or fixed.
Thank you, Karen. Mary.
You know, I've talked to some and been around it. Some like it, some don't. It comes down to whether I like it or not, it's what we're given and we have to do the best to follow it and do the best for our kids with it.
Thank you, Mary. Dr. Ushaan.
I was going to agree with the other candidates that it is federally mandated. I believe that we have invested these resources into the district and it is our fiduciary responsibility to keep the program and to use it. I've spoken with a number of different teachers that like the program, the advanced star for the children, and some people don't like it because they feel that the children, they may drop out or get frustrated. But down the road, when they hit middle school, this will all be reviewed. So that's why I look at it, my daughter's had some problems with Common Core. It just makes us hit the ground harder. And I know my oldest daughter at the high school, straight A's, and she's going through the same thing that my younger daughter did. So that is, and it should have, was the fiduciary responsibility, we shouldn't let it go.
Thank you, Sean. Krista.
Well, it's really hard to sum up Common Core in 60 seconds. I think the good thing about Common Core is that it says, it sets consistency and common standards. So if children move in and out of the district, they're not going to be, they're not going to be left behind moving somewhere else and move into a district that's far above ours or coming into the district, we're not going to have to make up time for what they've missed. I've talked to several teachers. My children haven't really had issue with Common Core, so I honestly didn't know much about it before this, but I investigated and talked to a lot of teachers. Our district has been developing this at all grade levels for the last five years. Every teacher that I talk to feels like it's working. It takes the rigor out of the, or puts the rigor back in the classroom and sets higher standards for our students. And I think that that's always a good thing, a higher standard is never a bad thing when you're learning.
Thank you, Krista.
Ray. All right. As far as Common Core goes, I have to echo everybody, it's here, so it's really what we're going to do with it. I do, I would have liked part of it when I was a kid. I know that it's nice to see, you know, I have three children, all three are completely different. They all three come to answers differently. So I do like that Common Core allows the teachers to really meet each child at their individual level. Of course, that also makes it harder for the teachers to teach because they're teaching it several different times. Our district has already spent quite a bit of money on it. So I think it's really just working with the teachers and listening to their input to make it fit for Gardner and our students.
Thank you, Greg. All right, the next question, we'll be starting with Mindy this time. And you will have 90 seconds to answer this question. And there's a little bit of a narrative here, so pay attention closely here. At the March Board meeting, district staff recommended the hiring of more than 20 additional frontline staff for the 2015-16 school year and that filling these positions begin immediately. Based on average starting level salaries, those hires equate to more than $650,000. How would you, as a board member, evaluate the legitimacy of an internal request to increase staffing while at the same time remain mindful of budget constraints? Mindy, you have 90 seconds.
I do not know, actually. That, wow. Yeah. That'll just be something I'll have to take home and research and look at and maybe put out there on my Facebook page. I do not know how to answer that.
Okay, thank you, Mindy. Karen.
That is a hard question. We're going to, I know we've got these cuts with the block grants, we've got actually sort of a raise, but then sort of cut. We do need those teachers in the classroom. I always support the hiring to get them in there, get the classroom sizes down. If you get too many kids in a classroom, it's always hard to keep them under control, keep them educated.
Thank you, Karen. Mary.
A lot of work went into doing that and realizing we needed to get teachers back into the classroom. Class sizes are getting bigger. Jeremy, a finance, has done a wonderful job on keeping expenses down in other areas and having some reserves to allow us to grow our district and get the teachers back into the classrooms so we have some funds available. You know, not knowing what the state's going to do for sure, they say they're doing it, we don't know where it's going to go. But I trust Jeremy, he's a finance, I trust Pam and the other administrators through the budget and found a way to get the teachers back into the classrooms to help the kids.
Thank you, Mary. Sean.
We didn't really detail the timeframe, but I consider it quite urgent. First and foremost, we just have to think out of the box. There's different resources now available. I know with the block grant that was mentioned earlier, I'd also set down Jeremy McFadden and we can use different resources for different things in the classroom for the teachers. Also, we just have to get the city involved. If it's a larger timeframe, getting the city involved, that revenue from local businesses, people moving into district, there's also money coming in and also sometimes facility use is a revenue maker and lowering expenses, but focusing and giving the kids the best education.
Thank you, Sean. Krista.
Okay, well, I've maybe forgotten some of the facets of that question. But I think whenever you answer a question like this, the very first thing you have to ask yourself is what is in the best interest of our students? We want, we profess to have a great district here and we want to continue to have a great district. And we're in the, the district is in the business of educating. You can't do that without teachers. You can't do that when, when class sizes are overflowing and you have one teacher to teach a subject to 30 kids. So again, I don't know all the vegetarian restraints sitting up here right, right now tonight, but like several others have mentioned, Jeremy McFadden has been a great resource to me in learning about it so far. And I would sit down with the people who are on the front lines and those are the teachers, the administrators, the finance director. And if they advised that this is what we needed and I believed it was in the best interest of the students, then I think that's what we do.
Thank you, Krista.
Ray. I would say that, kind of echoing, Jeremy, the finance director, is just amazing. I've been to several of the board meetings recently and between Jeremy and I forget the building guy's name, they've saved a lot of money by, like Sean was saying, thinking outside the box, thinking ahead of time. So I really think that by having fresh eyes on the budget, once we, once we can really take the time to sit down and review it, I think we can shave off even more and we can continue to get more teachers or staff or whatever's needed so that our kids really get the, the education that they, that they need and deserve. I think that's a, I think that's the end goal, is to try to continue to build. And by, by building the district, really the best way to do that is to add more teachers so that we can get the kids the individual attention that they really need.
Thank you, Greg. Robin.
First, as I was listening to everybody's answers, first thing that came in my mind was if I was in that situation, the very first thing I'd think of is the children first. The students need to be taken care of, the teachers need the help. If Jeremy said that it was needed and I fully support the current board and superintendent, and if they brought to me the information that supported that, that was needed, then I would ask it.
Thank you, Robin. We're ready for our next question. And Karen will be leading us off with this question. And you will have 60 seconds to answer this question. The question is, how safe do you believe our schools are? And what would you do to improve the safety and security of our students and staff? 60 seconds.
Well, I think our schools are pretty safe. I've not really heard any major things that have gone on in the school where we, I know we've got the SRO officer who is here, he's a non-stuff. I like the new way that when you enter any school, they've got you coming through the office, you are checked in, they know who you are before they just turn you loose into a hallway with any of the students in, in any school that I've been in.
Thank you, Karen. Mary.
I think security is, is good. I think, of course, I'm sure we can improve. I'm not the person to do that. I think working with the, with our local police and area agencies to make it, so no one can be in unless it's buzzed in or whatever it is. But working with those agencies just to make sure that we're safe for your children and the staff and the teachers there.
Thank you, Mary. Sean.
I believe this is a prime focus. Our children's safety is at the utmost responsibility. And I believe, I've met the new sheriff, I believe he's great, I believe the board should review our procedures and all that comes from that and working with the local law enforcement and the implementation. I see all the technology that we have. As someone had mentioned about being buzzed in, going through one door, these are all things that we need in these days and times. I would just like to see improving our safety of just making the parents easily contacted, instantaneously contacted and that they could come in and be.
Thank you, Sean. Krista.
Well, I think we have a pretty safe community right now, but you always have to be prepared. And, you know, I'd like to see, and I honestly don't know if there's an SRO at every school or if there are just one district SRO, but if, I'd like to see an SRO at every school. Not only for the, the safety of people coming in, but the safety of people already inside there at the high school, you know, if students that, you know, fights break out, you just need to have, to be able to protect the population in the school as a whole. I do like the idea of being buzzed in. I think it's really easy sometimes to walk past the office and go into the school without a sign in, but, you know, we have to look at how to fund that too. So those are all things to consider when we look at this.
Thank you, Krista.
Ray. I mean, I think our school is pretty safe as they are. Do I think that we could make improvements? Absolutely. I think that, I mean, as everybody said, buzzing in is great, but having to go through the office is, is great. Those ladies, they don't let you take one step further into the door and greet you. So I think that's, I think that's great. I think that we can obviously look at what we can afford and what we can, what we can change, but as of right now with the community we have, I think we're, we're pretty safe.
Thank you, Greg. Robin.
I believe our schools are safe. It's easy to sit on the outside and say, you know, we need to add more SROs, we need to add, you know, more security. So without being on the other side to see the cost and all that, that would be, I don't want to say, you know, we need more SROs. I believe we've increased the number of schools and they need to... I'm sorry, I lost my turn.
Okay, thank you, Robin. Mindy.
Overall, I think our school districts is very safe, like the other candidates have said. Buzzing in would be a good idea, you can never be too safe. Overall, just in the, in the elementary, when I go in, you know, you've got to sign in, you wear your button, so you're visible to people in the hallway that you are a visitor. But most of all, you know, the ladies at the office, they know who you are and I just think that overall we're safe. And I do like that the outside doors around the schools do remain locked during the day.
Thank you, Mindy. Our next question will be started by Mary. Mary, you have 90 seconds. This is a 90-second question. How would you handle requests if approached by an individual or by special interest groups? You have 90 seconds.
I was waiting for more.
That is a question, you can think about it for 30 seconds if you want. Can I start?
We do have a separate email address of the school district, so if people are wanting to get ahold of us, then they, as a board member, we do have access through their email and we do look at them. And we do, I do coordinate per se with the superintendent to see, make sure that our requests are answered, whether it's by her, another staff, administrator, or who, but we do respond back to, to individual requests, special interest requests. I mean, not knowing what, what kind of question you're asking, it's kind of hard for me to say how I'd answer that.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Sean.
I work for the USDA and we have a lot of congressional people that call in, reporters, different things, trying to get an insider scoop or tip. We always usually route those back to a head person. I believe that head person would be the superintendent. The same with, I work with the Zuma Credit Union, all of those special interest groups. Any contact, you want to make sure the message is coming from the head or who the head person looks to answer that question. So as I said, the superintendent or if it's directed to the principal, but definitely get back with them or forward them to where they need to go.
Thank you, Sean. Krista.
I'm kind of with Mary, I think I need more information. I, I guess if someone, if an individual contacted me as a board member, the first thing I would do would be to respond to that, to let them know that I received their contact and that I would go through the appropriate channels to answer whatever question it was that they had. And then I would follow up to make sure if I turned it over to the superintendent or if it was something that the board needed to talk about as a, as a team, I would make sure to follow up with that individual to make sure that they received the answer that they were looking for, or even if it wasn't the answer they were looking for, an answer. As far as a special interest group, I, like Mary said, I, I just don't know how to answer that question without knowing what kind of interest they would have, so.
Okay, thank you, Krista.
Ray. I guess I would handle it like I have throughout my whole campaign. I'm open, my phone number's out there, my email's out there, I'm out there. I'm here for you, that's why I'm running. Obviously, currently I try to help out as many people as I can, but I'll be able to do that a little bit more effectively being on the board. So by all means, please contact me and whether I get elected or not, I would love to help out. As far as special interest groups, again, it would depend on the special interest group. But it boils down to the citizens. It doesn't matter whether it's a group or if it's, you know, somebody from another state or an organization, it's the citizens. It's not what one group wants or what one individual wants, it's what the citizens as a whole want. And that's what we really need to look at as a board, is what everybody wants and make the decisions based off of what's best for the students, staff, what we can afford and then what the, what the citizens actually want. I think that's the best way to handle that.
Thank you, Greg. Robin.
I would handle the requests, I would respond that I receive a request and I would also follow up if it was needed. If I needed to direct it to another department. If I needed to direct it to another department, I'd follow up with that department head and make sure that their question or response or request was answered appropriately. The special interest groups, kind of echoing what Greg said, you know, they're citizens, and so I would go to the board or, again, the appropriate department and let them know what this group is requesting and go through them.
Thank you, Robin. Mindy.
I, too, along the same lines as the rest of the candidates, I would respond to the person and then direct them to the proper person that can better help them with their question. As for special interest group, I, you know, same thing with Robin and Greg, you know, I would respond back to them, but as well as direct them to who can better help them and answer their questions on what they need.
Thank you, Mindy. Karen.
Well, I'm going to refer back to my customer service. Everybody deserves a voice, everybody deserves an answer, everybody needs someone to talk to, and how you direct them, answer them, and make sure you get back to them is going to make them a happy person most of the time. You can't always make everyone happy with your answers, but I will sure try.
Thank you, Karen. All right, that's our first round of questions. Everybody's had a question to start with, so we're starting our second round, so it's back to Sean. And I want to remind you, if you do have some questions that you want to be asked, please get them up here, we're sifting through them and trying to compile them, so last chance, we have about 15 more minutes of questions. Next question is 60 seconds, and we want you to talk a little bit about school funding. How do you propose a district deal with a potential loss of state aid? 60 seconds.
Potential loss of state aid is kind of, maybe backs on a previous question about revenue and expenses. Dealing with the loss, you either have to look at the revenue or you have to look at the expenses. As I listed before, we receive revenue from the city businesses, different things like that that comes into the school, and also expenses. I would definitely not want to lower, cut salaries, different things, that would be a blast, but you always have to look at the expenses, renegotiate contracts, meaning like different insurance, other things, we've spoken with Jeremy McFadden, but you just have to dig into the budget, the financial statements, and see what leniency is where you can, flexibility to work with.
Thank you, Sean. Kristen.
Well, this is probably the hardest question so far for me. I've met or talked with Jeremy McFadden several times, trying to understand the budgetary needs and what we would need to do to best deal with what we've been given with the block grant. And I think first I would turn to, if I was trying to, and I'm kind of forgetting the question again, but if I was trying to cut expenditures, I would first look at non-classroom expenditures, where we, we could cut first that may directly affect our students and their learning process, things like our utility expenses, our insurance premiums, and maybe our transportation costs. But again, I'd sit down with the experts and let them guide me a little bit in making those decisions.
Thank you, Kristen.
Greg. Kind of surprises, just a short question or a short answer. As far as loss of state aid, I mean, we all know that the block grants came out and they're, they're just, they're giving us a specific amount. The nice thing that they've done is, my understanding, is instead of saying, you have this amount of money, but you need to spend it on this, 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 and this, they've given it to us and said, do this, just spend it on what you need. So that kind of gives us a little bit more room, a lot more room, to be able to shuffle things around and to figure out what we desperately need, what we don't. Obviously desperate needs are keeping the money in the classrooms and making sure that special needs things don't, special needs programs don't get any more cuts. But I think our district as a whole has done a great job of preparing for this and seeing this, foreseeing this happening. So I think we're in a pretty good state as of right now.
Thank you, Greg. Robin.
I'm going to echo again what Greg said. Our school district has handled, I think, looking into the future of the loss of state aid and for this time, and with that direction, I think they've prepared us to where if we need to do cuts, that it would be very minor. And I would look at each thing kind of like as my personal budget. I would take out the needs, I mean, take out the ones and do the needs.
Thank you, Robin. Mindy.
I, too, would look at the revenue and the expenses and what we have to spend, what areas need extra help and support, just digging in and looking at the budget, seeing, you know, what we can do with what are the block grants, you know, will hopefully give us a little more control at a local level of spending and then, you know, overall helping just our budget and placing money in areas where we need.
Thank you, Mindy. Karen.
Well, I know our local growth is going to affect what monies we get. The block grants are a specific amount of money that we are able to use in more areas than what the initial money that we would get, which is nice in some aspects. In others, just make sure that we have a board on duty that will make sure all of the monies go where they need to go, to the teachers, to the classrooms, to the school to benefit all of our children's lives.
Thank you, Karen. Mary.
I'm going to go back and just say, I trust Jeremy McFadden, I think we all have met him, and I think he's doing a fine job. And he's sat down with the budget for, you know, not just this year, but he's looking forward, too, and he's, we've saved some money, it's to allow us, not knowing what's going to happen. So knowing that state aid was there, what we were going to get, we didn't know. I, we're fine this year, I believe. They've been working on it, they're looking out for the future. Basically, going back with the staff and administration, Jeremy and Pam and Jeremy's staff.
Thank you, Mary. The next question, we'll start with Kristen here, and Kristen, you have 60 seconds. It's a broader question. The question is, what is your vision for education in this community? Where would you like to see the school district five years from now, 10 years from now?
Well, first, I, we're a growing community. I'd like to keep this hometown feel that everybody loves about Gardner, whether you were born here or whether you moved here for it. But I think we have to recognize that we're a growing community and we need to start preparing for that. And we prepare for that by making it, making our classrooms in our district something that people are proud to send their children to. I would like to see smaller class sizes. I'd like to see teachers not using their out-of-pocket monies to supply my children with their learning materials. And I'm stumbling, but that's basically it. I just would like to see our district be in the media for our teachers and students being forwarders in education.
Sorry, Kristen, I've got to cut you off. You did well, you did well. Greg.
As far as the five-year plan, I guess this is more my logical looking at it. Over the next five years, I really just want to fix what we, what happened in the past, really get the momentum going. I want to make sure that we, that we're wise about spending, the wise about our budget so that once the state figures out what they're supposed to be doing and getting us the funding that they need, that we can just boom and we're set. 10 years from now, I hope that we still, like Kristen was saying, have the hometown feel. I personally, one of my things that I like is, my wife actually is student teaching in Alata, and they have a resource center for all the teachers where they don't have to spend out-of-pocket money. They can ask the resource center for resources and they ship it to them at the schools, and that's what they use. And I would really like to see Gardner get that by donation or funding.
Thank you, Greg. Robin.
My vision would be that we prepare for the growth of more people coming in, whether that be buildings or, but the school board would need to sit down and make out a plan and try to determine what would be the best option to go. And also, and of course, always keeping the children first. And then in 10 years, I would like us to still, of course, be excelling in our education.
Thank you, Robin. Mindy.
My visions would be for smaller classroom sizes, more teacher support, like I said in the beginning, just getting them the materials and the tools necessary that they need so they're not spending out of the pocket, whether that be funding in some way and looking at the budget and see if we can even, you know, help them ease the cost of doing that for students. Continuing to keep our technology competitive with the surrounding areas, the surrounding districts, and then just overall, just keeping communication, transparency, and the open lines between parents and teachers in the district open.
Thank you, Mindy. Karen.
Well, I think our planning efforts should ensure that community growth does not outpace our ability to adjust and finance our resources that we need to go into the classrooms and help the teachers. The local economic growth, I think, is must to help funding to go into the classrooms and into the city to help our growing, because we're not going to stop growing for a while. So we need to get these businesses in here, get some money filtered into the school from not just the parents and the community that live here. We need help outside also.
Thank you, Karen. Mary.
My vision for the next five to 10 years, our schools are going to be growing, we're going to be needing, you know, additional schools, and what that is, I mean, that's going to be up to the community, whether we go to two 5As, two 4As. And the high school's growing, we're going to have to do something there, probably within five years, my estimation on that. That's my thoughts there. I think we need more programs for our children, and we talked about that at some meetings that I was in. What to give our kids, and that's the next five to 10 years, too, because it's going to take time to work on it, but give them more opportunities, more knowledge, more skill levels when they come out so that they're able to, if they want to go to the workforce, they can go, if they want to go on to college, junior college, or the trade schools, or whatever it is, that we've given them every opportunity to succeed.
Thank you, Mary. Back to Sean.
I would say that my five-year focus is financial responsibility, along mentioning McFadden again, I know his ears are ringing, but he has, our district has worked to lower expenses, and that's why we receive the lower bond rating, which is excellent. And at the end of that two years, or within that five years, that's going to be the end of the block grant or up to the new governor and budgeting. So I really want to focus on financial responsibility, increase help to teachers, more programs, AP classes, different things for the students, and as Ms. Nelson also said, within that 10-year frame, with the financial responsibility ready, we should be ready for the second high school and that growth that we hope will come through Gardner and Edgerton.
Thank you, Sean. All right, the next question, we'll start with Greg, and Greg, you have 60 seconds for this, to answer this question. I had it kind of builds on the last question we had. How would you address the challenge of growth in the school district?
Love being the first. I really think that making sure that between the city of Edgerton and Gardner, getting the right counsel on is going to really help us out. Getting the people on there that will get the businesses in that will help with the financing and all that, so that we can grow without getting larger classroom sizes and all that. Let's see. I love the sign, maybe just put the pressure on you. I guess it's just, it's really just looking at it, working as a team to figure out what we really need to do to better our students and make sure that we really can handle the growth effectively and appropriately.
Thank you, Greg. Robin.
The growth will need to always come together, and we need to work together as a team. I would say the first thing, of course, put your children first, making sure the teachers are, their needs are met, and just also other citizens and seeing what they have to say.
Thank you, Robin. Mindy.
Well, we're going to grow with the Edgerton and, you know, having the issue with the high school as it is, you know, there's a lot of kids in that high school, they have, you know, all the way from A, B, C, and D lunch, so it's definitely growing. So we'll have to look at what we can do about that, and that's working with Gardner, Edgerton, and our communities, you know, to, I don't know, to, just to look, I don't know.
Thank you, Mindy. Karen.
Well, I think we need to educate ourselves, really look at the numbers, rely on board members that are already there, staff, and input of the citizens on how we should move forward with the growth, what we need to do with it, because if we need a new high school, but we don't have the votes to get a new high school, then maybe we need to think about, do we expand for a little while? But we do have to go with the projections, and we have to rely on our staff to have the numbers and have the education to make us accountable and let us know, keep us in the know of what we need for our community.
Thank you, Karen. Mary.
Kind of echo everybody else, but I think the cities, Edgerton, Gardner, the counties, and the school need to work very closely together to manage this growth as Gardner and Edgerton both grow. Each needs to know what the other is doing, just so that we know that we have, we have schools available, where they're going to be, where growth's going to be, so that kids, that we have the schools there for the children. It's very important to work together.
Thank you, Mary. Sean.
I believe that we are ready for growth. I sat down with the administrative staff and seen how they put the estimates together for 2015, 2016, how they calculate the numbers. But there should always be transparency, there should be sitting down with the community so everyone's on the same page, definitely with the family, with the children, and the whole community step by step, so everyone is on the same page.
Thank you, Sean. Kristen.
Well, I know that our high school is just about at capacity now. I think they have like somewhere in the area of 1,600 students now, which means preparing for growth is something we're going to have to do, not in the distant future, but in the immediate future. And I think the best way to do that is to build on to the existing high school. That's how we, I think that's the way the high school was intended, that's why it was built with the intention of building on to it. It's more cost-effective than building a new high school, and it keeps that hometown feel that we all love. I think it should be a functional expansion with just a few, you know, not many bells and whistles, and just to meet the immediate needs of the students and the class sizes, but that would be my, my novice answer.
Thank you, Kristen. All right, this will be our final question, and then the candidates will have 90 seconds to give a closing statement. We appreciate your being here tonight, and I'm sure they will be more than willing to stay around and visit with you and respond to your questions out in the lobby when we're done here. But the final question is, and this, of course, comes from kind of a chamber perspective, since we're sponsored, the chamber's sponsored, we've kind of got to ask that question. What ways could the district get more of the community involved with USD 231, specifically the business community? And we're going to start with Robin.
How much time?
Oh, this is a 60 seconds. Robin.
Some of the ways I would probably look into is going to the individual clubs at the school and seeing where maybe they could reach out to the businesses and help them with their needs of the medium.
Okay, Robin, thank you. Mindy?
Kind of like what Robin said, maybe going to like the PTAs, maybe doing fundraisers, maybe connecting with the businesses, the communities.
Okay, Mindy, Karen?
Well, I think we need to keep an open door policy. You need to keep everybody informed that wants to be informed. Somebody calls you, asks a question, you need to answer the question or get an answer for the question. You need to keep in touch with our businesses. I don't know exactly the best way to do that, but I figure if we take a poll of people and figure out, hey, let's get some input from the community, how do we get our community behind us and help us in the efforts that we need to educate our children?
Thank you, Karen. Mary?
How can we get businesses more involved, district-wide?
And the community at large.
And the community at large. I would say there's a lot of committees, there's the Finance Committee, there's Construction Committee, various ones, that business owners and stuff could attend. There's also site councils at each school to find out what's going on there. The district can reach out to them, business owners need to reach back. It's kind of a two-way street, a chamber would be a good medium, in my opinion, to kind of facilitate that in a way. Again, meeting today was, you know, help the high schoolers and stuff like that with jobs and stuff like that, maybe some job fairs, working back and forth with the businesses and helping with employment, just working back and forth, I think would be good.
Thank you, Mary. Sean?
I believe the children, most of the business people in our community have children and grandchildren in the school, and they want to help. And all we need to do as board members is to ask and request that they help. I know a lot of donations were made. I attended the annual dinner that the chamber put on, and I think Jason is doing a great job of getting the word out and letting people know about being responsible for the community. These children are the future of the community. I read somewhere that a child is around, I think it was around $200,000 for the future of the community per child. So it's just different things of getting businesses to focus on us. I know we do a lot of fundraising, putting businesses' name out, so we just need to get out there, ask them for help, and they will definitely come and give back and help our children and the teachers.
Thank you, Sean. Kristen?
Well, I kind of want to echo Sean. I think the main conduit between businesses in our district was our students. If we can get our students actively involved, and I don't know what the idea would be, but I remember when my daughter went to school here, and she was on the basketball team, the first team in many years to go to state. And part of what I loved about Gardner was driving down Main Street, and there were banners across Main Street, there were signs in the windows, there was that pride. And if we can bring, the students can bring the pride, and the businesses will want to get involved that way, because there's nothing that makes you want to be involved more than children. So that's my suggestion.
Thank you, Kristen. Greg?
I'm going to cheat, I'm going to say ditto for most of the business stuff. I guess as far as the business aspect, I would love to sit down with the chamber and see what we could do as the district and what they could do as the chamber and the businesses themselves. But as far as the district as a whole, this is actually one of the first things I really wanted to talk about. I would love to get a Facebook page for the district. This is probably just me, but the district website is pretty difficult for me to navigate. So I would love to either make it a social media place where everybody can share their ideas openly, or I'd like to really alter the site, the district site, so that everybody can, everybody can know what's going on at one time and everybody can be on the same page. I want all the parents to know that you're more than welcome at the board meetings, it's really, and there's the sign.
You did a good job, Greg. Thank you, thank you. We're going to move into closing statements now, but I think they've done a great job. Let's give them. And we're going to start closing statements down at that end, so Mary and Sean gets a break here. You have 90 seconds to think, or time to think about it. Mary, you have 90 seconds.
I just want to thank the chamber for hosting this and sponsoring it tonight in the school district, allowing us to be here and everybody coming out tonight. It is no joke, I'm sure, not long as they're coming at us, but I think, you know, I appreciate the last two years that I've been on the board. I enjoy working with the teachers and the staff and seeing the kids excel, and I'd like to do it for another two years, so I would appreciate your vote next week. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Karen?
Well, USD 231 is my home. I've been a very involved parent, my kids went to school here, all that. My family has lived in the community for most of our lives, and very involved for its future success. Our community is dependent on high-quality education for our children. I hope to dedicate my time and energy to support our district as a member of the school board. I'm a good listener, relationship builder, I own my own business, I'm a nail technician, I sit and talk with people all day long here. I'm really in touch with what people in the community think of our district, of our city, and how everything is going or not going. I just want to represent our community in the best I can.
Thank you, Karen. Mindy?
I am eager to jump aboard, being a board member, I'm ready to work with my peers, I'm ready to continue the path of success, I'm ready to bring higher education to our children. As a parent, you know, I see that my children are succeeding every day in the district, and I just, I want to be held accountable, I want to be accessible, I want to have open communication, to be a bridge between the district and the teachers and the students and the parents, and vote April 7th.
Thank you, Mindy. Robin?
First, I want to thank the chamber for putting this on for us tonight, and I appreciate all the citizens that came out tonight for getting informed of who's money. My main thing is, I'm running for your family and mine. I, when I decided to do this, I, that's basically why I wanted to do this, to be a voice for the students, to be a voice for the teachers, and to get that communication going again. Also, I would be a good steward of the money that you entrust us with, and when hard times come, when hard decisions are being met, I will always put the children first.
Thank you, Robin. Greg?
I also want to thank the chamber for coming out. I also want to thank all of you guys for coming out. From what I can tell out here, we got a lot more than what the city council got. That really means that you guys care about the kids in the school district, and that really means a lot. I'm proud to be a DHS graduate, I'm more proud that my son's going to be a Blazer next year, my two daughters are going to be following him shortly. I really want to make sure that the district is as amazing or better than when I was a graduate, and I wanted to just continue and grow. I want to be your voice, I want to be the common sense on the board to say, you know, why are we doing it this way? Is there a better way of doing it? I just, I think we really need to hold whoever gets elected accountable to the spending, to the policies that are made, and I want you to know that I'm open and available for any questions, concerns. I've really appreciated meeting you guys door-to-door, and please continue that on. If there's anything I can do to help, I would love to. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Kristen?
Well, this has been quite an experience for me. It's been a learning experience. I've learned that it's not always enough to read and research, which is what I do a lot, but we need to participate. And so I think all of you guys that came out tonight, and win or lose, that is a promise I'm making to myself, I am going to be a bigger participant in what's going on in our community. I can't tell you why you should not vote for people up here. I think we're all here because we have the best intentions, we want the best thing for our district. I can only tell you what my qualities are and hope that they are in alignment enough with your own that I earn your vote. I want to maintain that hometown feel, I think that's super important. Blazer Nation, Blazer Pride, that's what we are, and we want to keep that. But we have to recognize that growth is coming and we have to prepare for it. And I feel like we've always been that district. We've had a few bumps in the recent history of our district, but I think we're moving past that and we're back to where we started. Like I said before, if we are in the media again, I want it to be because our teachers and our students are forwarders in education, because other districts want to model theirs after ours. I want to set high standards that we are proud to send our kids to schools here. So I just ask for your vote on April 7th.
Thank you, Kristen. Sean?
Thank you. I know everyone's ready to go, the weather was wonderful today, but this has been very productive, I really believe it's been a wonderful forum. I just want to say personally, I've met so many great people that really care about Gardner, Edgerton, and from community leaders who I've sat down with, to the school board administrators, who I've spent time with, Gardner, Edgerton residents who have answered my questions, who I've telephoned, emailed, just so many great people. I appreciate all of your time and support, I appreciate the endorsement from the Gardner, Edgerton National Education Association, the NEA, and first and foremost, I am passionate about our children succeeding, and I want to make sure that the teachers have the resources they need in the classroom. I hope that you will vote, I have voted already, advanced voted, but I hope that you will vote for me, position seven at large for the school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you all for being here, let's give them another round of applause.